Hey, John.
You ready, Joe?
Yeah, ready. All right, I'd like to call to order the Warricka City Council meeting of March 2nd, 2021. This meeting had, meeting details have been placed on the agenda to allow council and staff and public to participate in the meeting via teleconference pursuit of Governor's Executive Order N Nash 29-20. No public access to the council chambers at this time. We have it via Zoom. Members of the public may also remotely listen and participate in this meeting via teleconference. If you wish to listen and participate, we've already went through all that. We've got numbers and all that. During the, during the call, you may press star nine to raise your hand to ask to speak during the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. This is a time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during this public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on the future agenda. If you're here to make a public comment on, or comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at this, at time. If not, this is a time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, state your name and milliaddress so that staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Is there any public comments out there?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Lorenzo?
Somebody's walking.
Yes. Am I on?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, we all know crime has been skyrocketing in Warricka.
Yes.
Break-ins, car thefts, violent crime. There's been a few arrests lately, which is good, but we would all like to know what's being done to prevent crime. And I'd like to see a, a town hall meeting on public safety and crime prevention. Because we don't see anything being done to prevent any of this happening.
Great, yes, I, I like that, Lorenzo. Thank you for that comment. And we'll look into it on something, being able to, to the citizens here shortly, very shortly. Thank you very much.
Um, okay, now this is Don Marie.
Don Marie, hi there.
Um, I have tried calling you, Mr. Mayor, um, like six times and I haven't gotten a call back, so.
Don Marie, Don Marie, I have not, I have not got a single message from you. I'm sorry to correct you on that, but I have not, I have looked at my, ever since your first conversation with me on that, I have not got a message from.
Because the mailbox is full and it will not accept any other messages. That is why.
Okay, well, thank you for letting me know that because I did not know that today, so I will clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Someone in the, there's someone in the waiting room who has a public comment who's waiting to be let into the meeting.
I see no one in the waiting room for this meeting.
Um, it should say, let me touch them up, say, don't, hey, you in waiting room. There should be a Natalie Kelly in the waiting room signing in on Zoom.
Yeah, Arthur can let them in. I know Natalie.
Is a love to live.
Are you in the meeting yet, Natalie? Yes, love, that is Natalie.
Oh, great.
That is her email.
All righty.
I'm here.
She got her hand up. Hi Natalie.
Hi. I don't, I don't have my video on, sorry, I was coming back from down river, so I'm getting on late. I do apologize.
Okay.
It's your turn to per comment, Natalie. I told them to let you in for comment.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, so I just either wanted to either request to put some time on the next agenda to discuss, you know, kind of what's taking place within the city with, you know, the break-ins and the uptick in the, in the crime that, criminal activity that's been taking place and see if there's been any discussion from the councils under the cities and on, looking at trying to resolve those issues.
Great, yes, like I said, I, we, this was just brought up earlier too, so I think it's something we definitely need to discuss here in the near future. Possibly the next city council meeting, we'll see if we can bring some enlightenment on this situation. I know Chief Gamache is online right now, listening, so I'm sure he'll have probably some comments later on tonight on his staff report on some of this stuff, so that's great that we have some public comments on it because it's, it's a little crazy out there right now. I know that, it's, they're dealing with a lot of different issues the police is right now and it's, it's been pretty chaotic on around town and I know there's a lot of concerns and I know that Chief is dealing with them and trying to figure out solutions to that, so I'm sure he'll have some comments on that. But yes, we'd like to bring that up on a, on our next city council meeting too, of any things that we can resolve and what we can do as a city council too, to help out the situation too on that, Chief. Thank you. So thank you for that comment and we definitely are going to be bringing this back up. Thank you very much.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. That's good to hear.
All righty, any other public comments?
I have a comment. This is Catherine Gilbert. I would like to see some data from the police on the crime statistics, but if there is an actual increase of crime, if there's an increase in theft, or even violent crimes, or if we're just seeing more of it on social media and it feels that way, just to know if there really is an uptick in crime happening in Warricka.
Great.
Well, you know that all, well, you know that all that stuff is public. It's, all those things are public, they're reported to the federal government and they're, they are, they are public. It's, it's just, it's not, the federal government, a lot of times, they're not reported out till like three or six to nine months later. You know, that's, that's, that's a dilemma.
Just for a spotlight for now of just knowing what's going on in the data that we have collected to, to help ease the public's mind.
Yeah, definitely.
But again, unfortunately, crimes alleged, remember, alleged crimes that are taking place right now and in the last six months are, are, can be, they can be six, nine, depending on the severity, of twelve months, fourteen, sixty months before they're adjudicated. So again, that's, I think, another reason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but that's another reason why statistics aren't necessarily going to reflect what's happening right now.
That's why I'm thinking more of arrests, not necessarily trials and even if just detainment statistics over arrests and charges.
Okay.
Gotcha.
That's something we can work on.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. Much appreciated. All right, is there any other public comments?
As a reminder, if you are on the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. And if you're on the Zoom call, in the list of participants, you can right-click to raise your hand digitally. Mr. Mayor, I see no public comment at this time.
Okay, great. Just, just to clarify something. Don Marie, thank you for letting me know that my voice mailbox was full. I just went through and cleared it out about a dozen different ones on there. So thank you for letting me know that. It's cleared out now, so tonight, if you want to give me a call, thank you for letting me know that. Sorry about that. I apologize because I'm trying to be as open as I can. So thank you very much, Don Marie. All righty, we are on to number one, discussion, possible action consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless any members of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on the item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent item, calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from January 11th, 2021 through January 24th, 2021. B, approval of minutes on the meeting held January 21st, 2021. C, acknowledged receipt of 2020 general plan annual housing elements progress report. And D, waive full text readings on all ordinances on the agenda. Orders shall be introduced and adopted by title only. All righty, is there any comments or concerns first from the public or they'd like to make a comment on? And then if not, then I wish the, the council, if they have any comments or if they want to pull anything.
Mr. Mayor, I see no public comment at this time. Councilmember Middleton, there we go. Now you are unmuted. As a reminder, if you mute yourself, you will need permission to be unmuted again.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman McCoy. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as is, as listed in the agenda.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
A second.
I think, I think Debbie beat you, Corey.
Darn it.
And I roll.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Baker, would you do roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Barrett, or Mayor Barrett. Who's next?
He's saying I'm next.
Affirmative.
Oh.
Oh, Councilmember.
Skip Joan.
Oops, somehow we overlap something here.
I said I.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton?
Hi.
Mayor Keg?
Hi.
All right. Do roll call vote.
All right, number two, city treasurers report discussion, possible action acceptance of a cash balance of January 31st, 2021. B, budget to actual January 31st, 2021. I assume this is Reta?
That is correct. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
And, yes. So normally this would be a consent agenda item, but we're kind of watching the cash and the budget as we're kind of rolling into 2021. So basically maintaining the strong cash position and if, looking at the budget actual performance reports through January 31st, we're actually on track for the achieving performance to the budget for that. So if you look at general fund, we're down revenues, expenditures are exceeding revenues, about 531,000. We expect, expected originally about a $447,000 deficit. There's always a lag between the revenues being received on this and we just got our true-up of the sales tax for the last quarter of 2020 and very strong performance on the sales tax. I didn't have a chance to graph that, but hopefully when I bring the next quarterly report in, we'll kind of show the graph on that, on the trends. That's very positive trend coming in. So in looking forward, as we're already kind of evaluating some of the mainstream revenues for general fund, I think they're going to be fairly strong, so that's kind of good news coming in to kind of our, our, our planning horizon. After working, this is kind of part of the finance director's report, but we've kicked off kind of the budget work papers to the department heads and we'll be scheduling meetings this month to hopefully have that to you so we can have a good workshop with good information in May. And if there's any questions, be more than happy to answer.
All righty, is there any questions from the council?
Not a question, just, I was just, I'd like to ask just really quickly, are the TOT taxes better than expected? Because I know you said the tax, the other tax level was lower. Was TOT higher?
TOT is coming in higher than budgeted, yes.
Good. Well, that's some good news. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Any good news is good news. At this stage, especially with our budget, that's for sure.
Right.
Is there any other councilman's questions or concerns or anything? If not, then I'll open up too. If there's any questions from the audience too, I'd like to keep it open to the audience too. So I don't know if there's any questions there.
Mr. Mayor, I see no public comment at this time.
Great, all righty. Well then, I would welcome a motion then.
I'll make a motion to accept the city treasurer's report discussion, acceptance of A and B.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is Councilmember Smith Freeman. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Baker, would you do roll call?
Certainly. Mayor Pretend Barrett?
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman?
Hi.
City Councilman McCoy?
Hi.
City Councilmember Middleton?
Hi.
Mayor Keg?
And I. All righty, great. Thank you, Reta.
Let, Reta looks lonely. She wears all by herself.
If Reta's not careful, it's going to zoom in and take a, like a model-type picture of her, you know.
I think the doors are locked.
And zoom in close on you.
All right, let's move on to number three, discussion, possible action to A, evaluate moderately aggressive approach to increasing development impact fees from 50% to 100% rate. And B, to evaluate slower approach into increasing development impact fees from 50% to 100%. So that one, I think, are we going to go with Liz on that one?
Actually be Reta again.
Reta again. Let's have Reta.
Well, I, I think Liz is on the line and as well as Kim, so it's, it's a team approach on this. But certainly, we had a chance to look at this in depth, a little more depth at the workshop. Helped very nicely and we evaluated kind of the development fee revenue since 2027, when the, we first put in the development fee program. And, you know, it was kind of the economic downturn at that time, but then we kind of looked over time at businesses that have benefited from these, the subsidy of the lower discount fee. And I think it's, we're at that point where who is really benefiting, you know, is it the residents who are going to have to offset that, the cost of improvements to system capacity? Or will it be that the develop, when development doesn't pay its whole share? So it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a value judgment kind of, and there's a lot of components into it, but we looked at the workshop and I think the consensus was to bring us back some options to evaluate here because we couldn't take action at the workshop. And I think so we came back with a more moderately aggressive approach. And in that scenario, we're suggesting that we increase in the next six months fees up to 75% and within 12 months, 100%. Whereas a slower approach in option B might look at an 18-month increase where you rise them from 50 to 70% and that wouldn't happen for six months after passage of the ordinance change. And then from eight, then maybe ratcheted up to 85 months with the final increase to 100% within 18 months. So those were some proposals we wanted to bring back to you and get some input and direction. And then once we kind of have direction, we can know how to introduce the ordinance.
Great, thank you, Reta. What's the council? I know there's got to be some questions from the council on this.
I don't have questions. I, I will tell you that I was talking to, I've talked to my brother's neighbor and then I was reading an article in San Diego in the, in the union. And one of the things that their, their fees typically to build or remodel a house and, and we're talking about like doing 600 feet, square feet or more, $25,000. That's for a residence. Now for a business that's going to be more, we're not San Diego, I understand that. But we have, we have been very generous with the taxpayers' money by allowing large corporations like Tractor Supply, Starbucks, Dollar General, Grocery Outlet, a lot of those places to come in and, 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 well, probably not Grocery Outlet because they remodeled, but to build. And rather than accept a full payment for what, what the state says is a full payment, we only charge them half. And by so doing, we short our treasury, which means it, it, everything that we do as a city, whether it's, you know, I mean, it seems like, I'm not going to say that this stuff pays for roads or this money, but it does help with other things like infrastructure, that sort of thing. And most businesses, when they come into a city, understand that is a price of doing business. And my understanding is that most of the corporations that we've dealt with say, oh, wait a minute, we expected that, you know, to pay a lot more. And even, at, 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 what's the total? Would be 7,000, Reta, or a little over 7,000, if we go to total. Reta?
What, was that on 700,000?
No, no, for like, for like, for like, just a, for a single residence would be like 7,000 or so for a smallest project.
Oh, for a single family?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it would be right around a little over about 11,000.
And then in renting, it's about, depending on the size of the house, of course, anywhere from 30,000 to 35,000 for a three-bedroom, two baths, two-car garage. It's been half as long as I've been on the council, which is six years now. And I know one year that when Debbie and I were first on, maybe the first two years we were on the council, Debbie, we actually waived all permit fees because we were trying to encourage people to build and it didn't happen. So.
One person.
One person. One person, but it was an accident. He was going to take out a permit anyway. I think that was Tom McCullough. And anyway, so one person and maybe a second one, but both of them, it was, it was something they were going to do anyway and it was just lucky for them. They went ahead and took out the permit fees and then didn't build for a couple of years, as I recall. So we have tried, we've bent over backwards to try to do everything that we can to get people to build to the detriment of the funding coming into the city. So I, I agree, it's, it's time for us to take a look at this and especially with corporations coming in and building here. They expect, they expect to pay the higher fees and.
And budget for it.
And they budget for it, correct?
Exactly. Well, we got to look at too, if we're concerned, you know, in the past, we've been concerned of discouraging housing development of, of, you know, like new housing and single-family dwellings and stuff like that. We've been concerned about that, but our concern is not of that because unfortunately California has hindered us on, on many building, not us as a city. Us as a city, we, we try to welcome it as much as we can, but California, that's implemented all these regulations that has hurt us as a city, not, not us as a city, but California has hurt us because of the fire suppression systems. You have to have the solar, you have to have a hookup for batteries for your battery-operated car now that very few of us have in Warricka. And all these other code, all these other building codes that they have, California's implemented, that's what hurts us more than anything, not our fees. And until California starts opening their eyes to this, and even though Governor Newsom wants us to build more houses, build more places for people to reside in, unfortunately, they've created their own monster on this aspect. So our problem is not our fees, but it's California. So yes, I agree that we need to definitely take the next step forward to help secure our, our water systems, our sewer systems and everything else on this. We definitely, we need to be aware of, you know, all this, so I don't know as far as approach, you know, what everybody else is thinking. I see that we have a, a member of the audience that wants to weigh in, so Arthur, would you let Lorenzo or Don Marie speak then?
Yes, they are now unmuted.
All right, why can't you decouple commercial and residential development fees and have two different levels?
I think we do.
Yeah, we do. Leave a residential as it is with the lower fees and then increase the commercial up to the 100%.
Good, good question. We probably could, that's something we could separate because most of it's on that Reta, isn't it done by the water meter? On the size of the water meter part of that's done that way, correct?
So that would probably be a question we need to, by legal on how that might.
I'm sorry, Reta, I didn't get all that.
I don't know the answer to that. I would consult with our city attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may take a turn?
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Devin. I did get a call on this, full disclosure, and it was from a local developer, we all know, with his concerns about affordability for him to continue moving forward with this. And I did explain what we've all just gone through. And I don't know if he liked my answer, but I do know he appreciated being heard. But I am in support of raising the fees and I do think even the residential should be prepared to contribute to the cost of what their development is creating to the city. And if they don't pay it, that means their neighbors are going to. So I'm, I'm really in support of the first option that Reta gave us with increase to 75% in six months and 100% in one year. I also think that the fee should be based upon when the builder pulls the permits and if that expires, like their two-year timeframe, it's only good, they can't re-up it or renew it at that time at the same rate. They have to go with whatever's existing. But if anybody wants to build now, the, the next six months would be the opportunity for them to build at the lower 50% rate. It's a hard pill to swallow, but so are all of our expenses, so we need to take care of the whole community, not just the few who can afford to build. And I don't mean that in an ugly way. I'm very happy for people who can, but their neighbors shouldn't have to support that. They should have to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Like we go back, go back to what we talked about earlier. It would be, it'd be different if more people actually did take advantage of those low fees, the 50% reduction that we have implemented for, what, now six years, I think it's been at least, over that. How many?
Four, two years before that, it was none, if I remember correctly, with Joan.
Okay.
Seems like it was in 2015, I think. Corey, maybe you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Reta just.
Yeah. Well, I just want to echo, you know, I think people have been spoiled with our fees because they've been sitting there for a long time and now that we're thinking about increasing, now they're coming out of woodwork. It's been there for a long time, but I've been back for, almost four years of June, there's been two houses built in the city of Warricka. One in North U Estates, and then an older couple, they built a house up on that subdivision up by the cemetery, those new houses, they bought a lot and built. So there will be some houses coming and built, you know, probably built in Warricka, but there's not many lots available in the city of Warricka. So there's not going to be a huge, you know, flex of building houses in town. You know, there's a few lots for sale, but they've gone outrageous prices just because of the options of housing that's existing is getting slim. So, you know, and I think we've, these big projects like the Truck Stop and the Holiday Inn, those, those were big money. and I think we've, these big projects like the Truck Stop and the Holiday Inn, those those were big money projects that they had the money in the backing and then we had those cheap fees for them and they had, they had the money to pay. Like Paul said, they were willing to prepare it and we just had that. So I don't, you know, I just um I think we missed the market a little bit. It's not nobody's fault, but you know, with the market, with everything getting better in the economy the last couple of years, I think we should have, this should have been probably escalated a little bit earlier, but we can't go back. But um I'm kind of leaning forward to going toward, because it's going to be so long. You know, and people have time if they want to start taking out permits and, you know, take advantage of lower fees. But I like to see us accelerate instead of just going to seventy-five and having to come back. I would like to see us just accelerate the full going to the full hundred percent. My opinion.
Okay.
Because it's going to be a while.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's like, like, like we're saying, it's something we need to address and make a decision soon on this. Um. Do we still, I'm not looking, I don't see, is Paul McCoy still on?
Uh, Paul just asked me to send him the call-in number. He dropped off on his computer, so I just sent him the call-in number and the meeting ID. There he is.
Right. You back with us, Paul?
Yeah, sorry, I apologize to everybody.
That's okay. You're back.
How much have you heard? I didn't.
I think you missed, I didn't see him, so you missed my whole speech. Yeah.
Are you going to do it again?
No. I'll just tell, I'll, in a short, I just said we've missed some opportunities. And there's not, there's been two houses built in the last four years since I've been back. These big projects like the Truck Truck Stop, Holiday Inn, we missed our mark by getting the full impact fees from them. And they have the money to pay those. And so, you know, they got, they, they, we did a good favor. And I just saying, I I'm in favor of moving to the full, going back up to the hundred percent because it's going to take a while for us to get there anyways. You know, six or seven months, as Rheta's saying, I think we should just go ahead and, you know, next discussion, move forward to just bringing it back to where it needs to be. Because as um Joan said, we're even the cheapest in the county right now, Mount Shasta, Weed and all those cities, Dunsear, they're all higher than us and we're just people have been very lucky for the last few years.
I I would, I, Dwayne, I would be in agreement with Corey on that.
So you you guys are stating to bring it back at a hundred percent, right, instantly and not doing a gradual at all?
No. Well, I think she had, like.
It's going to be a while.
I think she had, it was six months and then it would go fifty percent and then another six months and it would go up. I don't think it goes up to a hundred percent right away.
Or in a year.
Right. I misunderstood Corey. I thought Corey was asking to to raise it immediately is what I.
No.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you were saying. I'm like, wow, that's very aggressive.
No, no.
I don't think we can, uh, but I do.
No, I said for the hundred to go, it's going to take a while to get there, so.
Yeah.
Raising it a hundred percent isn't even on the agenda tonight. It's it's, we have, we have just the the two, raising it fifty then, you know, hundred or seventy, ninety and a hundred or something like that. So I thought what Corey, Corey was saying, the more aggressive of the two, correct?
Yes.
And I, and I would agree with that because don't we, Rheta, don't we have to, or Steve, don't we have to introduce it, vote on it, then we got to wait six months before we can even make the first adjustment?
Correct.
Right.
Yes. So I mean, it's going to be longer than we think.
Yeah. I agree.
And I ask, may I ask Rheta to clarify that? Because I thought she said raise it to seventy-five percent in six months and a hundred percent in a year. Can you clarify your timeframe, Rheta?
Um, it would be six months after the ordinance is effective, as I understand it. So if I introduced an ordinance, then it would, um, to change, modify your ordinance, then that would be effect, after the second introduction, if it passes, it would be thirty days and then um, I need to cross-check with legal if after that it would, the six-month um lag time would then kick in.
Okay.
Let's, it's not necessarily going to happen right in six months.
It could be a little up more than six, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alrighty, is there any more comments on this? Okay, so.
I've seen no public comment at this time.
Okay. So do we want, does anybody want to push forward and make this uh put this uh on the going, ongoing, or if we want to make a decision right now? I think we need to.
This is Councilman McCoy, and I would make a motion to accept. Um, I think it was number, number one, or the first one of the two.
A.
A.
A or B, that's the only two options.
So, A, A on that poll was evaluate moderately aggressive approach, increasing development fees from fifty to a hundred percent rate. And B was evaluate slower approach, increasing fees from fifty to a hundred percent at a slower rate. So that would, you're going for the A, correct?
I'm going for A, that would increase it at a, at a slight, it would increase it at a rate six months quicker than the other, yes.
Okay, great.
So.
I don't know. Councilman Middleton, I'll second.
Alrighty. Alright, we have a motion by Paul and a second by Corey. Uh, Mr. Baker, do roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett?
Hi.
Member Freeman?
Hi.
The Councilmember McCoy?
Hi.
The Councilmember Middleton?
Hi.
Mayor Keg?
And I. Alrighty, well then, this will be coming up again then.
Thank you, Mayor Gary and Rheta.
Thank you, Rheta.
Yeah, thank you, Rheta.
All right, let's move on to number four, discussion possible action. A, extend existing structure credit on development impact fees for the courthouse project. And B, assess the current fifty percent rate for for the full courthouse project. Okay. We got Rheta on this one, too.
I'm going to let, Steve, do you want to kick off kind of with the history on this?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Mayor members of the council, you may recall that we were uh heavy participants in trying to get the courthouse reconstruction by going particularly early on. And there was a point in time where the courthouse site was selected and the buildings were removed off of it either by demolition or moving them to a different site. And at that point, I talked to the court administrator and said, you know, if there are uh credits from the demolition of the houses, then those would go towards the the courthouse project now. Since then, the administrator has left, the state's taken over the project, the project got delayed a few times. But uh nonetheless, that that was the the commitment. Normally, so that was about uh, that project started about eight years ago. I don't remember the exact date of the demolition and clearance of the property. Um, but it's been longer than our normal three years for someone to say tear down a building, then rebuild it and get the development uh credits. So at this point, I I'm looking at it and saying, you know, we made that commitment way back when because the courthouse is, well, now by the state, but it's, it doesn't go through the normal process of getting building permits for us when we would normally collect the fees. Uh, that that wasn't done. Instead, we're here at the back end when they're almost open and then looking back into time and saying, okay, well, we're past the the three months or the three years. But um by a significant margin, can we still give those credits? So that's what the A is on this, the um is to essentially allow those credits to happen. They would still pay net some development impact fees, which are listed in the agenda packet. The other alternative is to say, no, too late. Um, you know, the the credits expired, so.
But uh, Steve, uh, this is uh Councilmember Freeman. Could you please explain to us what those credits entail? I mean, how did they get the credits in the first place? Because I'm looking at this and I'm thinking um, the fifty percent rate is still half of what the actual costs are. And now we're talking about giving them a credit allowance. And so would you explain that, please? Why did they get a credit allowance and where did it come from?
So normally what happens, let's say that you um tear down a house on a piece of property and you rebuild a house. Or even tear down the house and rebuild a commercial building. The credit, the amount of the development impact fees for the water service of that size would be a credit towards what your impact fees would be for the project. Usually in the house because they, it's, they're not being increased, it's a wash. Um, if they were increasing to another. Um, so this is a fairly common practice is to have uh credits based on demolitions. Um, I've, I've actually done hundreds, but um that's something we do a lot here because we don't have a lot of demolitions and rebuilds here.
Right, right.
That's where they come from, from, I believe, was a total of five structures. Um, is how the calculation was done. And.
Five structures, however, we're talking structures that were uh either small businesses or they were actually residential. So I'm thinking that water and things like that for that huge gigantic building that they built in its, in its place would use a whole lot more water power, everything.
Absolutely. Then, and that's, that is reflected in the, so if you go down to option A on your agenda packet, you'll see that um, the fees for the courthouse project total are a hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight or basically a hundred and twelve thousand bucks. From the five structures that were torn down would be a fraction at just under twenty-nine thousand. So net, they're, they're still paying for that increase because you are correct, there is an impact uh of the courthouse that is larger than those five houses. So that's how the the credit is calculated against a much higher overall fee compared to the the five houses.
Steve, when you've done this before.
Yes.
Um, what uh, you know, what's the longest in other cities that where you've or even, even in Waireka, since you've been here, what's the longest time that's, you know, that where it's, they've kind of taken to complete a project? Because this, when you're saying it's going to be about eight years, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, there are some fee credits in uh one of the cities I've worked for that are uh still banked by the um, by the city from a a project um oh, twenty years ago. But now that's not the same project. Uh, I don't know that I've ever had this long of a um a project where the the entity at the front end and the entity at the back end are the same.
Ha- have you ever had one go, other, take, take that, what you were talking about, that other one out? Have you ever had one go three years or four years? That you recall? I mean, honestly.
I, I don't remember, no. Usually, usually, it's a couple of years and then um and then you you kind of want, like, sometimes houses get burned down and then they need to be rebuilt. So that's uh sometimes why the three-year limitation is there. The other thing too is a practical matter, you want to have it recent enough to where you can keep track of what the fee credits were. So you don't want it to go on for ten years, for example. Um, on a regular basis and not know what they were at the start. In this case.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Steve, sorry. So do you recall what the, what the total, when they first started building, what the total cost of this project was? Is it like in the ten million, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty?
Sixty million. Their brochure said sixty million.
Mm-hmm. Sixty million is the, is the the price package for this project?
That was the bro, what was printed on the brochure. There's.
It's probably done up in all this time.
That's okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I have no further questions.
Right, does anybody else have?
Um, I, I have one point I'd like to make in that we're offering them, the state, a fifty percent discount on the fees and yet we're giving them a hundred percent credit. So, does that seem right?
I know, I just want to make sure that the credits are also uh at fifty percent.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. So we're not giving it, yeah, that would not be right. Pay it fifty, no.
Thank you.
Kim, if I'm correct.
Don, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rheta.
Uh, Kim, aren't credits for the rebuild um set at thirty-six months generally?
Three years.
Correct. Kim may be on mute. Uh, she, your understanding was three years?
I mean, that's my understanding. I don't know where that came from. In other, I I haven't looked at the source documentation.
So exactly what do you need us to make a decision on? Both, both of these amounts?
We have two choices, option A or option B, a full amount or we give them a credit.
That's essentially the the discussion. They will owe the hundred and twelve thousand for development impact fees uh for the project. And the question is, do you give them a credit for the houses that were um, that were torn down? I guess the last house was moved by Bill Schmidt less than eight years ago, but the commitment was pretty, pretty long ago.
I mean, the progression of those being rebuilt are doing great.
Not.
What, what'd you say, Corey?
I said in the progression of those being redeveloped, there is going great.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think those houses have been there, both of them about somewhere around five years.
Yeah.
Haven't they? I I mean, I could be wrong, I don't know, but.
No. Yeah, you're right.
Five or six years.
I, I feel that we, as, my own opinion on this is that we, we shouldn't give them the credit myself, but I don't know how the rest of council feels. I think we should.
I think her.
Yeah, I think option B.
Okay.
Would you like a motion?
Can you read the, when you make the motion, can you read the option, please, or makes the motion?
Certainly. This is Debbie Barrett. I would like to move that we accept option B. The city would assess the project at the existing fifty percent rate without credit from the existing structures as the replacement structure was not completed within three years of demolition. Fees for the project at fifty percent are one hundred eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Alright, we have a motion by Debbie. Do we have a second by anybody?
Councilman Middleton, I'll second.
Alright, Corey. Great. Alrighty, we have a motion by Debbie and a second by Corey. Uh, Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Barrett?
Hi.
Did he, Councilmember Freeman?
Hi.
Did he, Councilmember McCoy?
Hi.
Did he, Councilmember Middleton?
Hi.
Mayor Keg?
And I for me also. Great. Thank you.
Steve and Rheta for your work on this and Kim.
Yes. Thank you guys.
Alrighty, move on to number five, discussion possible action, resolution of the city council to, of the city of Waireka proving destruction of certain city records of the Waireka Police Department. Um, probably start off with Dave on this one, Chief Gamash.
Yes, um, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted. Here you are.
Okay, perfect. Um, we've uh gone through this a few times over the last several years, pretty much mostly every year, depending on um certain circumstances of um getting the resolution signed. Um, this is a pretty common um item. So we store police records uh for up to ten years or for up to ten years and at ten year, at the ten-year mark, we uh sift through all uh between ten and fourteen thousand cases by hand. And we select out the cases that are, that have evidentiary value, things that need to be kept. Um, sexual assaults, rapes, uh, homicides, et cetera. And the rest of those cases, we check with other agencies to see if there's any uh necessity for any of those cases that they know of. If there's any outstanding warrants that exist in those cases. And when we've narrowed that down, I prepare a uh staff report that's, that should be in your packet that outlines uh case numbers uh oh nine zero zero one through oh nine fourteen thousand seven five four. In the second paragraph, it um accepts a handful of cases that we pulled out of there that must be kept pretty much forever. Uh, the fiscal impact, this is about hundred and fifty dollars. We, we partner with a company called Ice Shred that comes out of um Medford or or Grants Pass, Oregon. We used to use a shredder, but by the time we shred fourteen thousand cases, we usually need to buy a new shredder. So uh it's cheaper to have Ice Shred come down and um dispose of. So it's cheaper to have Ice Shred come down and dispose of these things in a couple of minutes, where it used to take months to to shred for graveyard dispatch, so. I'm asking the for approval of a resolution to destroy cases zero nine, uh, zero nine zero zero one. Through zero nine fourteen seven five four, accepting the cases that are listed in the second paragraph.
Okay. Great. Alright, is there any questions, council?
No.
Uh, this is Councilmember Freeman, I make a motion, the recommended motion, adopt the resolution approving. The destruction of certain city records at the Wairega Police Department, and I would say, and keeping. Those reports listed in the second paragraph, those important files, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
This is Councilwoman McCoy, I'll second the motion.
Alrighty, we have a a motion by Joan Smith Freeman, a second by Paul McCoy, Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Hi.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor Keg.
Hi, great, thank you, thank you, chief, appreciate.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Yes, thank you, chief.
Don't go away.
No, I have a staff report, I'll save the rest of the good stuff for later.
You're not off the hook yet.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the one that somebody's been patiently waiting this whole city council meeting for. Yes. Six, discussing. Adopt the resolution approving request associated with the special event known as the Siskiyou Scenic Bike Bicycle Tour to be held. On the dates of April twen, oh, excuse me, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and eight and May first, twenty twenty-one. We'll let Crystal Duncan talk, speak first.
Okay, so I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club of Wairega. And we're asking for a resolution allowing us to use Upper Green Horn Park. For the Siskiyou Scenic Bicycle Tour to be held May first, twenty twenty-one. As you know, we held this event May fourth, twenty nineteen, and it was very successful. There were two hundred and twenty riders from all over California and Oregon, and there are even riders from Massachusetts and Alaska.
Wow.
All were able to enjoy the beautiful city and county. You know, we had planned to hold an event again last year on May second, and all was set for this. However, due to COVID, we had to cancel it, and we are now able to hold it according to the current guidelines. Completely outdoor biking events are deemed safe even in the purple tier. There will be no group entertainment this year, and that registration masks and social distancing will be utilized. And I did speak with Shelley Davis at the Siskiyou County Public Health Department. And she's in agreement with everything, and she says it's a go. We are requesting the use of Evergreen Horn Park on the day of the event. Plus the option for riders to camp both the night of April thirtieth prior to the ride. And the night of the first following the ride. We also will have a picnic lunch served to the returning riders in the afternoon at Upper Green Horn Park. Between eleven AM and four PM by Siskiyou Meat Market Caters, following the COVID guidelines. We are hoping to have two hundred to two hundred and fifty riders this year. The riders return over many hours, so there's no large group meal. We request permission also to sell beer from the Etne Brewery on the afternoon of the first, collect the ride fees from the riders. And sell T-shirts related to the ride. So do you have any questions?
Nice. Any questions from the council?
No, this sounds like a great event, I'm I'm in support. But I I think it's going to be a little bit of a challenge if you have two hundred people keeping them six feet apart, we do have a big park, but.
Yeah, but there, the rides, there's two different start times. So one group with the longer rides will leave the park at seven AM. The other group with the shorter rides leave the park at nine AM. And you know, with bicycles, you're really never closer than six feet anyway.
That's true.
If that.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
Think about the after.
If I could, I'd like to make a comment real quick.
People are coming in, very trickling in over hours and hours, and so. You know, when they they pick up their food and they go sit down on a picnic bench. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much, Crystal, for all those hard hard work.
The chief had a comment.
He has a comment, right, chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a real quick comment, I met with Representative from Rotary today, or yesterday, I'm sorry. He explained the the multiple rides that will be taken off and. I've been either a patrolman or a sergeant on many of the the Siskiyou Century or Siskiyou Scenic rides that have taken part and. The police department is one hundred percent in support and will have anybody we need on duty to make sure that the. Riders get out and through traffic on time, we're one hundred percent in support of seeing this happen.
Awesome, is, I know Matthew Bray was was on, I don't know if there's any. Thing he wants to make a comment on, if there's, everything looks good on his part.
Everything, everything looks great from the public works standpoint. This type of event is always just flawless, so. No issues with the use of the park.
Awesome.
Great. I had two years ago, we had the tent camping at Upper Green Horn Park, and I noticed on the. Document that Arthur printed up, he said Lower Green Horn Park, but we'd actually prefer to have the tent camping. On the flat ground at Upper Green Horn Park, that's the only change I would like to make in that document.
I think we.
Mayor Keg.
This is, this is Matthew Bray, I think we could do that, what we we refer to as the west lawn, as you come into the upper park. On the big flat, that's that's typically where we like the camp to happen, so. And then we'll we'll adjust the bathroom locks and timers to to suit the the evening.
Right, right.
Mayor Keg, this is Councilman McCoy, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving requests. Associated with the special event known as the Siskiyou Scenic Bicycle Tour. To be held on the dates of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and May first, twenty twenty-one. With the change in the camping area being moved from Lower Green Horn Park to Upper Green Horn Park, what Public Works Director refers to as the. West, west, west lawn.
I second that, this is Councilmember Freeman.
Awesome, we have a a motion by Paul McCoy and a second by Joan Smith Freeman. Mr. Baker, please do roll call again.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Hi.
Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
Councilmember McCoy.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor Keg.
And I, great, thank you, thank you so much, Crystal, that's that's awesome, I'm glad this. I'm glad it's going on this here, because it's it's so valuable to our community, I'll tell you what, this brings in people from all over. And it's something outdoors, so we need that right now.
Yes, we do.
And just pray.
Life, life back there at the park and my back there and all.
Thank you, Dr. Duncan, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, move on to last one. The one we've we've heard a couple of times, number seven, possible action continued, continuation of urgency ordinance number eight fifty-five. I'm sure Steve wants to inform us about this.
All things.
I I would like to belabor this at length, actually, there was a little bit of of data that I wanted to let you know, this is taken off of the LA Times. Site about for Siskiyou County, so it's usually a day or two behind. But the adjusted case rate at this point is at nine point one for Siskiyou County, that's in the purple range, that's part of the reason why we're still in the purple. Range, the positive case rate, which is. How many people go to the to get tested and how many of them are positive is now down to six point nine, that's in the red zone. So we're one, one tier lower for that. So that's probably a good sign. On the website, it's, there are over ten thousand vaccines that have been given out, I recognize some of those are. Two vaccines to the same person because they got the first and the second shot, but in. A county of our size, I think that it is a really. Impressive number, again, that public health has. Has put out there to get get these vaccines out, administered and and in people's arms. So with that.
Agree, I just wanted to clarify one thing, you said the nine point one and the purple. I called over and talked to Shelley Davis, the Director of Public Health. And I asked her why, because it seemed like we had less cases, and what she said was, because it's based on a hundred thousand, the population, and so it has to be extrapolated. What it means is we have at least four cases, uh, positive cases of COVID a day, every single day. I was kind of surprised about that, but it's four, it's not actually nine, that's the percentage.
Correct. A hundred thousand people, you're right.
I've been following it daily too, and we're we're slowly decreasing, it's it's going down, down, but I want, I looked on the TV this morning too and. Clamath County, Oregon and, what was it? There was a few other counties up there, Curry County and and Lake County, all three had zero cases left as of this morning, that they had none this morning.
New ones.
Yeah, new ones, correct, new ones, so hopefully we can start getting to that stage to where we can get open back up too and just. Still keep practicing our social distancing and mask, I know it's hard for everybody, we're, everybody's past this point, I know that, where everybody's. Fed up with this whole mask wearing and and want to move on with life, but the one good thing we got going for us is. Spring and summer is right around the corner, it's where we can be spending some time outside. And hopefully then our numbers are going to rapidly decrease then, that's that's what we can hope and pray for, because. We need to, we need to get up and going again, our our city is, needs the business, we need, we need people here, we need to be able to. To socialize in some aspects, it's killing us.
Right.
So why a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion. Does it need a motion that we continue?
Yep, we usually have done that, that's been our practice.
Okay, then I'll make the recommended motion that we continue.
Alrighty.
Councilwoman McCoy will second the motion.
Alrighty, again, we have Joan Smith Freeman's and Paul McCoy, Mr. Baker.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Hi.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor Keg.
Hi, alrighty, motion carried again. Alrighty, now we're off to city manager and staff reports, Mr. Baker.
Mayor, what I would like to do is to call on the police chief to give a. A report. On some criminal activity. I do want to also mention, I. Oh, gosh, now I can't think of his name, all right, there's a bench in Green Horn Park. That I was going to bring up and it's just.
David Franklin.
Thank you very much, I was thinking of Franklin, somebody. David Franklin's bench is out there. It fits nicely if you sit on it, so if you haven't had an opportunity, I would encourage you to. Encourage you as you're walking around the lake to to take a sit and remember the things that that Mr. Franklin did for the.
Yes.
Park, for the community, for the city. And I'm I'm glad to see him honored in that way, and I know it's been up for a while, but still. That was. It was nice, anyway, with that, Chief Kamash.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Baker. So to start off with some of the public comments first. There is a number of of aspects, and I don't want to go too deeply into it, but. The, you know, let me look at the state. The state average for increase in violent crime right now is about eighteen percent higher than the the previous year. Siskiyou County is, or no, Siskiyou County, the city of Wairega. I looked at the stats, it's closer to twenty percent higher on violent crime than the state, so it's a couple of percent higher. When I'm on the phone with Cal Chiefs and other chiefs around the state. It's pretty evident that. Being enclosed inside your house. Without work and with lower wages is causing. Significant increase in. Violent crime, specifically domestic violence, drug use, child abuse. Sexual abuse of children, and it is, it's a pretty rampant, not just California, Oregon, Washington, any of my. Counterpart chiefs in those states are are reporting the same. Another fact that seems to be adding to it, believe it or not, is the masks. Of the COVID nineteen, so those of us that are not out committing crimes that want to get back to normal life. Soon as we come out of a bank or a store, I pretty much tear my mask off like I'm a surgeon that's been in the OR for fourteen hours. And. But for criminals, they they are using the mask as an excuse. Where before, if we recommended to business owners or folks that they get video surveillance of their businesses, we would always. If they if they did get video surveillance, we would have a face, we could post it on Facebook, we could. Pass it around the officers that knew everybody and some, you know, suspects would be. Developed, unfortunately, right now, the video surveillance that we have of our most recent. Red, I'm sorry, the. The commercial burglaries right now are are quite high. Commercial burglaries right now that we have video surveillance of are taken between forty and sixty seconds. From the entry time to the time the suspects are out of the business, so. We're, the police department is getting the phone call from the alarm agencies about seven minutes after they've left the building. And the video surveillance that we're getting of them are a bunch of folks in masks, where it used to be that if you saw, if you were a patrolman and you saw someone. At nighttime with a mask on. You stopped them and found out why they have a mask on, but everybody seems to have a mask on now, so. It it it's working out to the advantage of the criminal element that they're wearing masks, however. Today and yesterday, I reached out and pulled pretty much every string with every confidential informant that I've ever had over the last thirty years, and. I'm. Cautiously confident that I have information that might solve three of the commercial burglaries recently. Of course. I don't know, many of you have heard about the burglary and vandalism of the Masonic Lodge. So above the old Cooley and Pollard Building is the Masonic Lodge and. They basically have one way up, it's the two glass doors on the third street side, and. Then there's a fire escape up the back, and the Masonic Lodge has not gone into daily. So a few days, maybe a week after the burglary and vandalism of the Masonic Lodge. Somebody went in there and and discovered the burglary and and vandalism. And unfortunately, at the time, we were looking at it as a really. Not unsolvable, but a lot of the items were from the eighteen hundreds, swords, scrolls, the the Masonic Lodge Charter. Jewelry, you know, a number of things that are literally priceless. And then vandalism on top of it and and whatnot, but Officer Pat Dirksen did a really excellent job. Tracking down some information that led to a couple of probation searches on juveniles. And those two probation searches yielded a majority of the property. And so the the Masonic Lodge got their scrolls back, the swords, much of the jewelry. The the eighteen hundreds Bible. A lot of the things that were are irreplaceable are now back in the hands of the lodge. And two suspects, juvenile suspects are in custody, hopefully to answer to the vandalism, there's about eleven hundred. To fifteen hundred dollars in damage, spray paint and all kinds of food product and stuff spread around the lodge, but. Luckily for them, I I'm really happy because those items are completely irreplaceable and not insured. And those are, that that's been solved. The the commercial burglaries, they do go in waves, as many of you have seen, we will go in just unbelievable waves of commercial burglaries where. One or two people will hit somewhere every night until. They're caught, and it just takes time and patience and investigations to to get folks. And it just takes time and patience and uh, investigations to to get folks in custody. With the uh, masks on and the uh, video of folks wearing masks, it it makes it even a little doubly hard. Uh, we're a few officers down, so we're running a little lighter uh, shifts right now, shift coverage than normal, but, um, I'm confident that the suspects in these commercial burglaries will be caught. And uh, we have, we have folks that are, that are dedicated to those commercial burglaries solely. The uh, lastly, um, I'm sure that uh, many of you saw of the report of uh, tragic loss of life, in the Greenway Project, uh, Greenway um, Park area. Of course, you know, we have a suspect in custody, but that doesn't restore life.
No.
Um, I've been in touch with the District Attorney's Office uh, regarding future prosecution of that, and, we're uh, very confident that a future prosecution and conviction will come in that, in that homicide. Um, to speak to the folks that that called in about increasing crime rates, it it is true. It is a nationwide thing, it's a statewide thing, and it's been a strange year, and, when, when odd events happen, those who take advantage, will seize on opportunities like this to take advantage. But the police department is, is making every effort to change and to um, to adapt to that and to curb the crime as we can.
Well, like you said, it's ones with the COVID going on right now. As, as we speak tonight, I've had on our City Council, I've had two people text me complaining about the, the, what's going on with the businesses getting broken too, so, and like you said, number one thing is they're wearing masks, so everybody, all these people, and me included, you know, that have video cameras on our businesses, I, you know, I've over the past couple of years put on, all my businesses, not only video cameras, but I got motion sensors. And every sensor you can have, the glass break sensors, I got in my house, I have it on my businesses. Um, and it, I did, it notifies me within just a couple of minutes. And luckily, since I live in town and my businesses are in town, I can, I usually am there before anybody else can show up, so.
Sure, but the uh, the one thing is, is that, like I said, the the average time for the three that I have on video right now is fifty seconds. From the time the glass is broken, the items are taken, and the suspects are gone, is about fifty seconds, so. Um, I called the, most of the alarm companies that are servicing these folks, and there's, there's a, there's a time period in which you are allowed to put your code into your own alarm system. And that's so that as soon as you open the door, the alarm doesn't go off. And um, that time period is, is fairly short, you know, you don't have much time to put that in. But um, it's long enough for fifty seconds to, for a criminal element to get into a place and leave.
Oh yeah.
So by the time the uh, the folks get the dispatch in out to us, so that's why we've put on a couple extra um, overtime shifts, to do high visibility patrol through um, the business district. And and of course, there's a few, there's a handful of residential burglaries and auto birds and things that are going on. And then, of course, we have a, uh, I don't even want to bring it up, a heightened or increased homeless uh, population that, are awake a lot at nighttime and have nothing to do but uh, look for things to unbolt and take. So um, it is a little bit challenging, but we have taken steps to uh, to, eh, like I said, in, in contact every informant that's ever walked, that knows about stolen uh, property to try and find out who these folks are. Luckily, the uh, the Masonic Lodge was um, left some really telltale signs of, the ages of the suspects and what they might have done, and, and the school officials and and probation folks helped us out tremendously, uh, uh, pinpointing those folks. So that was a a nice one to solve, but commercial burglaries are coming next, and and I'm confident that they will be solved.
Can, can I add something? Uh, and this isn't, this isn't for the chief's benefit, this is for, everybody that's in this meeting, cause the chief already knows this. But I I spent uh, I don't know, ten hours with an officer, I don't, I think it was ten hours, with Officer Dirksen on a ride along, which maybe it wasn't ten, it was eight, cause we started at seven. I think we were done at three in the morning, seven PM to three in the morning. During that time, each time that the officer uh, made a contact, uh, or as probably as they call it, door rattling, maybe, and with a business, and drove through and took a look or a door, or or checked the door that might have been unlocked, cause we did find an unlocked door in in a, in a building, uh, that night. And so they had to go through the whole building, they had to call in somebody from that entity, I won't mention who it was. Um, that, that is then called back uh, to, he uh, the officer that's on duty then calls in the dispatch and, and lets them know that they've checked that, and that's locked. So you know, that's something that, when, when the chief or the lieutenant or sergeant comes in, they can go, hey, we want to see if you guys are, you know, you know, if 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 officers are, I don't want to say doing their job, but if you're keeping up with this. And I was real, I was quite impressed. The other thing I will tell you is, and I know I had somebody approach the other day and say, well, where's YPD? I never see him. And I said, well, I rode for eight hours, and I said, we were in every neighborhood once or twice. I said, we were in these business areas two or three times, you were, we answered this many calls for this, this. Really? And I go, yeah, we, they did. I said, we, we were busy from seven. Uh, you know, I mean, obviously, it's, it it wasn't big crime, and that's, that's kind of good, but, but, yeah, they're, they're busy, and and I appreciate what they're doing. I I am gonna probably make some people unhappy right now. Uh, because uh, Chief has talked about um, burglarizing some of these uh, businesses. And unfortunately, if you go onto social media, you're gonna find locals that support it, that that, that say, listen, they probably needed it, I'll pay for it. I mean, that's exactly what they said, they probably needed the clothes, or they probably needed to get something out of GHG Hardware. I will pay for it, if if you just tell me. And unfortunately, that's not what it's, to me, that's not what it's about as a citizen. I, i- it's about, you know, it's about people being responsible. And obviously, these people are not responsible, or they wouldn't be breaking in and stealing things from other people. So, uh, Chief, um, kudos, because you guys do get out there at night, you're out there in the day, but you're out there at night. Um, you are active, and I will tell you what, um, when things happened, there was always backup for you while I was on, and like I said, when we found one building open, and they made me stay in the car. And uh, and um, three officers went through that building with the uh, after the uh, and and called the advisor to meet him there. So, thank you.
Boy, I appreciate it, that's um, that's a a very um, candid description of a nightly patrol. Um, our officers do um, approximately between a single night shift, I get a daily log. And every morning when I get in, I get a daily log emailed to me, and, I've dabbled with the idea of sharing the daily log with City Manager, the the City Council, so you can see the activity. Um, unfortunately, there's a lot of abbreviations, odd uh, police abbreviations, so you'd have to work through it to see, to try to, decode what it is where we did, but um, each officer, when you talk about those, those um, business checks, that we do each night, each officer does a minimum of ten, and most do close to twenty. So on a night shift with three officers, you'll do between thirty and sixty business checks. And almost every night, we find one to two open businesses that are not locked. Um, almost every night. And we go through them, and the ones that are unlocked rarely are the ones that are ever broken into. They're always the ones that are crazy fortified and have camera systems, and um, they pick the hardest targets in the world, but there are, there are open businesses, but um, the amount of effort that goes into proactive patrol at nighttime, um, yeah, I, our officers, when they start their shift, they give a starting mileage and an ending mileage. So I know what, how many miles an officer will drive at nighttime, and Wairika is a fairly small town. And the average officer logs between a hundred, a hundred twenty miles a night.
Wow.
So that tells you how many times three cars cover around three hundred and sixty miles a night in town. And uh, between thirty and sixty businesses, it's just, it is uh, an unfortunate part of our society, uh, that people take advantage of is burglary. And uh, we, we do work very hard to stop it, and there are times where we have very little, if any burglaries. And there are times that we are inundated and flooded with burglaries, and, uh, as we see those trends, a lot of times it takes a few days, because the first few burglaries you see, you go, well, maybe it's a one day thing. The second day, you're like, man, this is looking like a trend. By the third or fourth day, or the week has gone by, and you're like, wow, we're getting hit like crazy. Then we have to start adjusting shifts, uh, putting extra officers on on overtime, and, eh, altering patrols in anything we can do to, to uh, try to curb that, that particular crime. But on top of those crimes, like I said, um, violent crimes are up, suicides are insanely high, and uh, drug overdoses are insanely high, and these are all things that we respond to every day.
No, this whole, whole COVID is um, made all these issues ten times worse, I tell you what, it's crazy. That's why I can't wait to get out of this COVID crisis. It didn't happen in November, so hopefully it'll happen soon.
Yeah, no, very challenging, but uh, we're hanging in there, we're trying to keep morale to a, to a point where the officers, don't lose faith. Um, I mean, you know, and another thing that adds to it is the change in laws, where commercial burglaries used to be a felony. If you broke into a commercial uh, business, and it was assumed, I mean, it wasn't assumed, it was a law, that if you broke into someone's business with the intent to steal or commit a crime, it was a felony. Commercial burglaries are now misdemeanors, and as COVID and other things happen, misdemeanors don't even get booked into jail.
No.
So even if we were there, when they broke the window, caught them coming out the window with the merchandise, they maybe be booked for a few minutes on a misdemeanor, but uh, they would be cited and released. And this is nothing against our current jail or sheriff's office or anything, it is the law. And being followed in the state. So if you're a criminal and um, you know that your time in jail is limited, um, it just adds, it adds further to it. This is a, an odd time. And folks are very frustrated because they remember a time when commercial burglaries were a felony. They remember a time when uh, there was consequences for actions, and and those times have kind of come and gone. And uh, the criminal element takes a advantage of that.
Yep.
I was gonna ask you.
Might I, may I ask a question?
You had one.
Okay.
One at a time. Ask a question real quick. Do you think, this Councilman Middleton, do you think uh, one particular business in town has been hit a few times the last couple of weeks, or three weeks or whatever, and I'm not gonna mention the business, but they've been, they plaster their, their break-ins and the people, yeah, I can see where that helps, but, to me, that, I may sound stupid for saying this, but to me, I think it catches wind to other criminals, thinking, they're looking at this, saying, hey, that guy got in there or whatever, and they got away with it. And it's taken them a few seconds. Am I wrong by thinking that it hurts a little bit by posting that, they're, they're getting, these criminals are getting away with entering that business and breaking in, and some people can see, am I wrong?
No, unbelievably, social media fuels this fire so much.
That's what I was thinking.
That it's, it it used to be, prior to social media, the suspect had no idea how long it took to get in, where they got in or anything, and then uh, these postings of these things, tell an amazing uh, roadmap of how to do it.
Okay.
You know, and you're absolutely right, I mean, that's not a dumb question at all, if, if um, if there's a way to get in and somebody sees it, and it's basically mapped out in front of them.
Right.
That business will be hit again, and the businesses that are, um, I know that it's, it's a funny thing, in in Los Angeles or other big cities where businesses get hit, they assume they need to bar their windows. And in a small community like we, like Wairika, you go, I don't want to see bars on every window. You know, and it's, it's more of a, a cultural and visual aspect of our small town. That people do not want to see bars on windows, that's, that's not our town.
No.
But, yeah, those things are um, huge deterrents. If you plaster over the hole that was uh, broken into a business and it's not fortified, and it can be gotten back into, then it'll be gotten back into.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Paul, did you have a question?
Thank you.
Can I add?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I just wanna, I also want to let people know that on that night that I rode along, we also made three stops in homeless camps. Uh, not, not for harassment, to check and to, 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 to see how things were in cultivated relationship. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't something to stop and, you know, give somebody a hard time, it was just how they were doing everything. No matter how we feel about the homeless, it's, it's always safer when, you know, when, when, when the police and the community are involved. It always makes it a, a safer community, and so um, I respect that, and also, and this is not the first ride along I've done with YPD, and it certainly won't be the last.
Sure. And Paul, we um, we, to add to that, we do make um, nightly walkthroughs of camps, to talk to folks, to get an idea who's there, um, maybe to ID new people. Because the identification of a new person, believe it or not, the homeless population has kind of a, an odd hierarchy in our town. There's folks that are here, they don't, they don't have anything to hide, they're not being bad people, they're not burglarizing our businesses or causing problems. But they will tell on new people in town that are here to do damage and harm. And it's, it's beneficial to us to make, relationships with the homeless that we have in town that are not causing damage and harm. Because they will tell us who is here to cause damage and harm. So the nightly walkthroughs of the camps, are, are viewed by some as a um, you know, um, I don't know. No, it's not heavy handed, and we're not siding with one side or the other, it's just a information.
Outreach.
Yeah, yeah. You're just doing your job.
Yeah.
Check, yeah.
Chief, a while back, um, and the Police Officers Association was trying to push a bill through. It was kind of like a, a, a three strikes, you're out type thing, except for it was, if you committed three, uh, misdemeanors of the same crime, that you could get a felony out of it, whatever happened to that?
Um, it was in legislation also at the same time with that other bill that I was um, trying to get through about school safety.
Right.
And when, at that particular time, things were moving along nicely, COVID hits, the state legislature goes out of session, basically because of COVID, and everything gets dropped. So all of the momentum that we had on anything, uh, whether it was uh, three consecutive misdemeanors of the same crime, school violence, any of these things that had any real teeth to them, um, were climbing the ladder and died immediately upon the, upon the suspension of um, the state legislature.
That's too bad, cause both of those were really good bills that needed to be put through, cause I'll tell you what, right there, like you said, with the, that, three misdemeanors moving to a felony would, that would deter some of these people, I tell you what, if they knew that they,
Sure.
You're not gonna keep getting away with it, that they're gonna get busted and then do some time over it, then it would change the course of their uh, thought process, I think.
Well, even your hardest criminal, if they know that there's consequences coming, will avoid, um, the, the crime. I mean, uh, it's tough to, it, they, they don't like it, they don't want it, and if there's consequence, if there's no consequences, then,
Exactly.
Why not? If, if a commercial burglary is a misdemeanor and it lands you no time in jail, no, to choose and nothing else, then why, why not? Um, so it's, it's a unbelievable odd battle that I've never seen in my career. Um, and it's something brand new that, all of the officers are unbelievably demoralized by, because they go out and they do the job. And then the change in the law makes it to where they, don't see jail time, they don't see convictions, they don't see, they see the person immediately out. We have, we have one person we arrested yesterday for burglary. He's, was arrested early this morning, by afternoon today, he was arrested again for burglary.
Yes.
So we're um, So we're um. We're going to thousands and thousands and thousands of calls for service. And the only thing I can tell my guys to keep their morale up is that we do our part of the job. Okay, go out, hit hard and um. Arrest people and take them to jail. The release from jail, the conviction of the crime, all of these other things are not our part of the job. We went out and did our part. If the rest of it falls apart, if the rest of it falls short, that's what happens. We do not stop.
Yeah.
And when they kind of retune back to that and they understand that that's their part. They do much better. When they get all frustrated that they've arrested them yesterday, today and tomorrow. They get a lot of, I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you, it's, it's kind of disheartening to say that I'm gonna be here arresting the same person day after day after day. Knowing that nothing is gonna happen. And it's not against our DA's office. I'm, I'm not gonna put past blame to DA or probation or. The jail or anything. It is the laws that are passed in the state. That allow these things to happen. All that we can do is continue doing what we get paid to do.
Yeah, that's, it's unfortunate, like you said, because the, the morale of officers really tears them apart, knowing that they can't. They don't feel like they can make a difference and I don't blame them. It's, it would be tough. I, I can't imagine doing a job. That makes you feel like you're doing nothing, getting nothing accomplished, you know, that's, that's tough for them and it's. Like I said, I just, I love all our officers. They're awesome guys and they do an awesome job. With what the tools they have to work with. They're doing the best they can and they're, you have a good group of guys. You really do.
Uh, we do and it, to be a new chief, to be coming into it at, in a time like this is um, challenging. Very challenging to keep uh, the, the public happy, to keep morale up, to keep personnel and try to recruit people is, is quite a, a challenge, but. It's what we do. We've um, we've done it for a long time and we're gonna continue to do it. I don't care what the laws are, um, we're gonna continue to do it and. Um, there, there will be frustration with the business owners and. It's gonna happen and, and I understand. I, I feel for them and all I can assure them is that we will do our very best to. Bring folks to, to justice.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, this, Mr. Baker, do you have any, any more? Um, staff reports, good news?
Do it.
Hmm.
We're good.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll move on to councilman reports then. Uh, Joan?
Oh, well, it's been busy and I don't know if you want to hear everything, but I'll just try to hit the, the highlights. Um. We had a Siski Revitalization um, Commission meeting this week and it was interesting because we had a presentation. Uh, from Shasta Living Streets and I don't know if you're familiar with that, Anne Thomas, um. And uh, also we had Caltrans on board there, Tammy Quigley and a new employee. Christina Prosperi and they wanted to talk to all the cities that have a main street. That is a state highway, like we have State Highway three is our main street. Um, and they're going about it in an entirely new way now. And they're going, they're trying to go into the community more and get community input. Um, I asked them, it was a Zoom meeting, of course, but I asked them on the Zoom if it was too late um, for us. Um, for the city of Waireka to talk to them about what's going to be happening and they informed me that it was not too late. Um, and you know, and I talked specifically about, you know, that horrible incident, the fatality that we had. Not that long ago on um, on State Highway three, right there in front of Valero. And uh, anyway, so uh, they are willing to meet with us, uh, and I've got the contact information. Um, that uh, we can contact them and maybe set up either a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting. They said they'd be willing to come up and talk to us. So um, I was pleased about that. Um, also, um. Sue Tavallaro, who's the mayor of the City of Weed, is setting up a mayor's and council members monthly. Um, uh, conference call and she and I got that idea on, um, it was a mayor's roundtable. Um, a couple of months ago that the former president of Cal Cities, the League of California Cities, said he meets. Uh, he's the, um, he's the mayor of Yountville and so that's Napa Valley, is that Napa County? Now, but anyway, all the mayors within uh, their areas, Noma, Napa, and there meet weekly. Uh, we didn't suggest that because everybody's busy, we know that, but anyway, they have their first meeting um, on February twenty-third. I did attend. There were only um, four or five of us, I think, on at that time, uh, Fort Jones, uh, Weed. Um, I called in and um, I'm trying to think if it was the city of Doris. It wasn't truly like, but anyway. Um, oh, I know, and also a supervisor, Michael Cobbsef, called in as well. And so to keep the cities as well as the county linked as to what's going on in, in each area. Um, in, in the cities and the county. So uh, anyway, they're going to be doing it again. And um, um, I'll have to get that date for you, but um, I'm sure. Dwayne, you'll get that, you'll get the information on it. So, um, if you can, you know, if you can attend, that would be great. Um, I did get my second dose of the COVID and so um. This tomorrow, no, Friday will be my first week, so the next week after that, then hopefully I'm good to go. I won't, I, I still, I know I still have to wear my mask, but anyway, I'll feel safer. Um. Uh, tomorrow I have the privilege of reading a Dr. Zeus book to a preschool. I usually do it in person, but unfortunately this time I have to do it on Zoom, but that's okay. I'm, I'm looking forward to that as well. But there's a, there's a Zoom tomorrow from uh, the Lake of Cities for protecting our communities. Lessons learned on mass testing to improve rollout of vaccine distribution. And then on Thursday, the Cal Cities Climate Change Roundtable Zoom. Um, and then on Friday, I'm meeting with Shelley Davis, the Director of Public Health. So um, there's a lot of stuff going on and I hope to, I hope to uh. You can let me know. I know that Paul is interested uh, in meeting with the, the people on uh, on the main streets. You know, if anybody else is, we'd have to, of course, we'd have to uh, put out a public notice. Uh, maybe we could have it in the chambers, but um, anyway, they could maybe guide us through what our options are. Because they claim that we do have a lot of options um, that we can work with them on, um, that Caltrans will pay for.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
For sure.
Same meaning, very interesting.
Yeah.
She's brand new. This person, Tammy Quigley, she's worked with Caltrans at another position, so now she's um. She's the uh, head manager of this, um, this new outreach that they're doing to all the cities. That, and evidently, uh, let's see, Happy Camp and Waireka are the first two. And then they're reaching out to all the other cities as well.
Great. Thank you. Sure. All right, Cory, you're up.
All right. Um, let's see. I received. Like, I didn't know what he was talking about, but his daughter messaged me. I received a complaint, not a complaint, but kind of some concerns about. Um, a lot of traffic collisions and near misses of people walking near, um, so he there, he lives near Golden Center. So he mentioned Golden Minor about many problems over there, maybe accidents recently. There's been a few accidents, I guess. I guess, I don't know. And um. The other day, he said he saw a car racing through there and almost hit some kids, so he has some concerns about that intersection of Minor Golden. Um, right there, so he was gonna be either calling in or writing a letter, email to me, so um. So that was one. And then the other person, um, citizen who called. Me was um, kind of concerned about what the city's doing and the plan with the fence. That the talk of the town has been going on, the fence over by the park. I guess you got. Something, you guys doing something but the fence over there? Sorry, where it was gonna hurt.
Which, which?
Cory, the green, Lower Green Horn, something about the homeless, the. Pacific Power or something like that, or it's.
Talking about there, um. Because uh, uh, one area is we're looking at, talking about. The fence, I think you're talking about is probably the Lower Green Horn Park over towards um. The entrance of Lower Green Horn Park, which is, we're talking about possibly expanding the park in that area. And over the other one that you're talking about, Cory, is over by Pacific Power, um. They're talking, we're talking with Pacific Power. In conjunction to putting a, a, a gate and fence system over there possibly. To make sure that the um, the Pacific Power um, plant there, the. Station there doesn't get vandalized, so that's, that actually is part of Pacific Power's uh, property. Believe it or not, over there below the dam that you're talking about, Cory?
Yes.
It's actually part of Pacific Power's property there. So um, I know that um, Ben has been working with. Um, Pacific Power on that to hopefully um. Keep some stress away from Pacific Power on that place getting uh, hurt or vandalized, because that's, you know, that. Station there is vital for power for our, our city, so that's something that we need to keep safe. And that's what they're working with in conjunction. Uh, Matt is, I know, is on the line and he might have a comment on that too, so uh, Matt, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, hi, good evening. Um, the, like you, you say, Mr. Mayor, Ben's been working on that with Pacific Power. And they're currently looking at some options for fencing, additional fencing for the power substation. And that may include um. Blocking off what we call the Oak Tree Parking Lot Circle there. Um, which is not a true parking lot. It's just been beaten in by cars over the years, so um. So that, that is in the works, but we don't have a, a solid answer from Ben yet through Pacific Power. So as soon as we do, we can get you back on that.
Sorry, I guess their concern was it's not gonna um. Um, proposing like restrictions for access for walking or anything to the park or any of the trails or anything like that, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what they were concerned about is any type of restriction to their walking trails or anything like that.
No, no, we actually have a, the Trail Prism that's been built in there over the years. Uh, a number of years ago, not over the years, but a number of years ago, the Trail Prism was cut in for an ADA access. Bike ramp to come in from Oregon and that's a project that we've been working on. Through the uh, ATP, the Active Transportation Program and, and such for years, looking for funding, which we just got and a, a couple of years ago, so. We're gonna come in and pave that, so, but the, the driveway approach to the Pacific Power Substation. Ties into that and then it, so it'll still be accessible, not an accessible problem for walking or biking. But we're looking at probably throwing some concrete K-rail, the big stuff you see on the side of the, the highways. Um, in there just temporarily to block off some parking areas for now until we can get it, but that's, as I say. Ben's working on it diligently with Pacific Power right now.
Okay, great, great. And let's see, the other thing is, is they know a few residents of, uh, citizens have called there. Mentioned is the concern about the crime, which the, we already went over with the chief and um, you know. Share their concerns, so, but hopefully that will all be getting taken care of and the report was great by him, so I think that's it for me.
Awesome, thank you, Cory.
I'm sorry about my pups. Regarding the window.
Regarding your house.
Yeah.
We know that Bella wouldn't do that.
No, she's like through everything. I have contracts.
I have a couple of active ones. I have a couple of active ones over here and sad news is I don't know if Joan saw, but most people know I lost my big boy a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He got, he got, he got sick suddenly and um. He had a tumor rupture in his spleen and I, we had to put him to sleep, but, so I missed him and um, missed his presence here, but it was sad, but. You know, he didn't suffer long, so, but now I got the two little, two ones here, but I lost my big boy.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I already heard that, Cory.
It was hard.
No offense.
No, it's not.
No. I guess you're up now, Mr. Paul?
Um, yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I, I just, I, I only had a couple of things. I wanted to say that um. That I, I'm, I'm actually trying to think, uh, I wanted to thank the crew, Public Works, for all they're doing. I see them around doing quite a bit. I got to get a tour of the new building, which is housing uh, the old VAC. Which is truck, which is gonna be used for uh, sewer, I think predominantly is what they have said, unless things change. Um, so they don't, so they can keep it ready, just go for sewer pumping and not for freshwater. Um, did, whoever did it, did a really, really nice job on it. It looks nice. Um, it's not totally fenced yet, but it will be eventually, so you know, I want to thank Matt. And uh, and Ben for, and Steve for, you know, getting all that done. Um, I wanna, uh, one of the things that I did mention to Steve and, and I don't think Matt, I probably talked to Matt yet. But I did happen to chat with Ben about it is I'd love to see. The fencing go up, when he, when Cory said fencing, I was thinking of the fencing in the parking lot at Lower Green Horn Park. And take out those rollers and that would, I think, would protect uh, uh, you know, things a little more from people driving on. Not that they are ever gonna drive onto the field or anything like that, but I'd love to see that done, um, you know, especially if it stays as warm as it is now. Um, I want to thank Ben, I want to thank Steve, I want to thank G, uh, Sergeant um. Uh, Potter, uh, and Lieutenant Betts. And I want to thank Matt for going out with us out to the park to look at what, at the area which Matt refers to as um, Oak Tree Circle. And uh, so we could look at, at what are, what options are there to, to protect both the area. And to, and, and from, you know, from uh, people getting in and around that um. Uh, that power plant and for people getting hurt. And I think that what Matt has shared with us. Um, you know, if you go out there and look at it, you can see that it's very viable. Uh, even if the fencing has to change a little bit, it will not restrict anybody's walking or riding abilities. And you know, you've got a bridge down there that goes over the spillway and I don't think anybody uses it, so it's nice to be able to see people come in. From that side and they can still walk in from that side, you know, and, 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 you know, and there's plenty of places to park down by the church and all in that area. So I want to thank Matt and Ben for, for work. I know they're working on that. They're working on the asphalt on the rest of the trail with the money, so. Um, and, and with that being said, I also want to thank Steve Baker for going up with me to uh, hope. Uh, no, 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 rogue retreat, to see the camper up there. Uh, I know that homeless is a hot button issue. We have probably fifty percent of the people in our fair city that support, you know. Support uh, helping the homeless out. I have an equal fifty percent that approach me and say. Don't do it, don't do it. You're just encouraging more and they don't need our help. I, I understand that, so, but we do have to do something. And so um, I appreciate that you, Matt, and that um, Steve. Are working on that with other people within the city and that there are other organizations also involved to look at the entire picture, not just where they live. Or stay, but how do we service them for mental health? How do we service them for um, for public health? You know, how do we service them for uh, you know, for, you know, making sure that they're able to eat and how do we keep them from. Uh, the ones that are from doing things that are illegal. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Paul, on that. Um, and I'll have some more to add on to the, on the homeless thing because there's some. I had a meeting and there's some good stuff coming around on that too, but uh. Debbie, it's up for you. Your, your turn.
Okay, mine's pretty short. I wanted to let everyone know that C2C, the Call Your Rest Stop is opening up again on March first. And invite every, with all the safety protocols in place. And also invite everybody to go on the website and check it out. Uh, it's in its early stages, but all the cities have an entry. Uh, regarding their history, elevation, the stats for a city, that kind of thing. Uh, but it will be developed even more. I'm, actually will be going out to. Solicit a little bit of advertising to help finance some of the uh. Things we have going on, preferably to have a more uh, hired help, more consistent.
Allison, Ellen Jansen, your new manager.
Yes, she's only a part-timer though.
I know.
That's good, but she's doing wonderful.
It's on Monday and three hours on Wednesday. She got her shots the same time I did.
Yes. But anyway, so uh, please go on and look at the website because I. Yes. But anyway, so uh, please go on and look at the website, because I do think um, our uh website designer uh Jan Fahey has done a wonderful job and um, made it very affordable because it's free. And she has volunteered her time, so we can do that. Uh, the other thing is, finally, after over a year, uh, LAFCO has a meeting scheduled for. What happens? I haven't gotten the agenda yet, but um, hopefully, hopefully it'll be something interesting. And I've probably totally forgotten how to run a meeting by now. It has been a long time. Uh, also, uh, I did have a meeting last Tuesday with uh C2C up at the COS campus. And um, again, just a flawless Zoom meeting. I just love how smooth it works up there. But uh, they do have a serious problem with the homeless there. Every morning when um, Crystal goes in to open up the campus and get things running and going, uh, she has to chase the homeless out. Uh, there's all kinds of um, what, human waste there. There's clothes, there's trash, there's garbage. They've removed the outdoor drinking faucets because the homeless people use them to climb on the roofs.
Oh.
So I have actually invited her to come and discuss the issues that she deals with and hopefully brainstorm a little bit on how we can help um mitigate some of these issues. Because it, there's no way I would let a child of mine go to a campus that appeared to be that unsafe. So sooner or later, it's gonna affect attendance and that bothers me a lot. Um, there was, oh, yeah.
Where, where is this, Debbie?
The Waireka Campus.
Where?
Waireka COS Campus.
Thank you.
Welcome. And um, I did invite her to speak tonight, but um, I don't see your name on here, but also because Mark Clever is the Waireka Campus Administrator. Uh, she would like to bring him into the conversation as well. So uh, we look forward to doing a uh problem-solving discussion with her. Yes?
Definitely.
Okay. Uh, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Debbie. So I'll keep mine short and sweet. We did have a homelessness meeting yesterday at uh 1:30 Behavioral Health. Uh, we discussed a lot of these issues. One of the, there's some, they're working on some more funding. Um, hopefully, some of this funding coming through to the state is looking pretty good, because that's one thing I could say. Governor Newsom is looking at these issues and knowing that we have a huge homeless problem all over the state. Um, and West Coast as far as that goes. Um, they, our behavioral health is still has um traders that they initially uh purchased through some of this money um, through a turnkey program. And there's other programs, they um actually purchase some of these traders. Um, they have about a half dozen of them now that started off through the COVID nineteen funding that they got through that. And now that's actually moving in, into regular homelessness. So they're gonna have up to, I think, ten to twelve traders that they're gonna have available for some of these programs, homelessness slash COVID. And that's gonna be useful. It's, the problem is um, getting them into, to the trailer parks, 'cause right now, a lot of the trailer parks are full. And some of the trailer parks don't want to have them in their trailer parks, unfortunately. You know, all these are nice traders. They're brand-new traders. Um, but they don't want this in their trailer parks, unfortunately. So that puts a hindrance on the availability for some of these people to utilize these traders. 'Cause some of these people obviously don't have vehicles. Well, if the, the traders are located out of town, I'm not gonna say where, but if they get located out of town, it's hard for them to be able to get back and forth to the resources that they need. So they're working on that. I actually gave them a suggestion on a couple avenues that they're gonna look into on moving some of those traders into, into town and some of the places. So they've been doing that. Um, they are anxious to work. Um, behavioral health and, and our group is actually anxious to work on some of what we're discussing. The um, the uh urban campsite that we've been discussing, and it's been out and about, and people know about it. We still working on trying to um, get it fine-tuned. And that, soon as we get all the details worked out, that, that Siski, Siski County and all them wanna work with us on anything that we can do, and financially, they wanna help us out too. So we actually discussed some funding that can go through, that can actually be utilized through us as a city, through the county. So that's one good thing. Hopefully, we can utilize money. Um, the other thing I wanted to discuss too is with, with the council, is the shopping cart ordinance. I think it's time, I'm gonna, we need to push forward on that real hard. Um, so there's, we're gonna have it, I'm gonna have a, a discussion this week with our city attorney on getting this done. Done, did, deal. Um, we've had a discussion here last week about it, so hopefully we can get it finalized and get this thing rolling. I went out to the city yard. We had um, the blue carts, I'll call them the blue carts, out there. Um, there was seventy-two of them still present. Yeah, seventy-two, I counted of them. And a few other ones, but pretty limited now. The red carts, the pretty red carts, there's only a couple of those. Uh, well, there's two different red carts, I should, I should say that. So there's a few of those, but the majority of the carts out there, the seventy-two that I counted. And get some uh money for um scrap metal. Yeah. So um, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to, to push forward and give them a notice of one more week. And then we will take, send them off to the scrapyard. Is that okay with the council?
Yeah, as long as they are given fair warning, I think a week to ten days is plenty enough time for them to get it.
Yep.
I would agree with that, but there is, it's gonna have to go through the police department and the city manager, 'cause that's instituted the original letter. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with it. I also agree with, uh, and I've got a couple of uh, of um. Oh, no, never mind. That's offense ordinance. I agree with the shopping cart ordinance. I think we need to see if we can get that instituted. They are expecting it, 'cause I've talked to each of the managers at the stores or owners, and they are expecting, they know it's gonna happen. They said, hey, thanks for giving us a heads up. We know that when we buy them again, they have to be able to lock. They can't go out of our parking lot.
Right, yeah. So. I think it's time.
We need to get a gun.
A what?
So we need to get it done.
Oh, get it done.
We need to get it done.
I think that's carrying it a little bit too far, Cory.
I don't know.
I have a gun.
I forgot one, I forgot one important thing. And Arthur, while you're on, if you will unmute yourself. So Arthur has been working like day and night on this eight-point-five-million-dollar swimming pool grant. Um, and so uh, I've been uh attending the meetings off and on. And this week, I also spoke with Josh Saxton, Saxon, who is the Executive Director of the Karuk Tribe. And uh, they have agreed to partner with us on the, the uh garden part, because we're going to be calling it the Waireka Pool and Native Garden. And so they will come in and identify the types of plants uh that, that, that are, you know, that are Karuk native plants, as well as the, the name of the plants in their native language. Also, Robin was calling uh Mary Kaplan and was going to talk to her about getting the Shasta tribe to do the same thing. I think that would be a huge coup for us to get the two tribes that haven't even been speaking to each other now working together and working with us. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Robin was really excited about it, as am I. And so now, Arthur, the, the grant is due, is it March twelfth?
That is correct.
Okay. And how, how are we doing on it? I know that. I know you've been working really hard on it, and I wanna thank you for all your hard work on that. And I know you and Robin have had your heads together on this. So thank you for all your work. And I mean, I'm really nervous. This is the fourth round and the final funding. If we don't get this one, we're not gonna have a pool, sadly.
Yes.
Wow. Yeah, thank, thank you, Arthur, for working on that. And hopefully we can, we'll keep our fingers crossed and say a prayer. And hopefully we'll get this going through this time.
Never say never.
Nope, I think, I think we're. Yeah. I think we got a chance this time.
I hope so. Josh did say that they would either give us a letter of recommendation, which I don't think that this uh grant allows, does it, Arthur? Nor he's, he would make a phone call to some people that he knows down at the state to let them know that, you know, that the tribe is in support of this, because we are an underserved community. I think that would have a lot of, uh, I think that would carry a lot of weight.
Yeah, I think.
I agree.
Yeah.
Alrighty, unless there's any other comments out there, then I think we're done. Okay, nothing else? Alright, well then, we are, we are closing this and going to uh close session. So thank you, everybody out there, and appreciate all your time. And uh, keep up the good work on the city staff. We appreciate it. And thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you. Can I, or see you later?
See you later.
It was never clear when to be able to speak.